Good evening and welcome to the regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, January 10th. Is Ms. Donnie or Mr. Donnie? Donnie? Yeah, but like a name I could pick either way. Hey, Mr. Legg, how are you? If you want to tell us where you're from and pray for us, we would love to.
Yes, I'm a member at Central Baptist Church. I live in Palm Bay and...
If you step in front of the mic, we would love it.
Okay. My name is Donnie Legg. I'm a member of Central Baptist Church in Melbourne and been part of a ministry we founded and president of called Second Adam Ministries for over 20 years here in the community and just thankful and very humbled to be here tonight. And that's about it.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Let's pray, folks. Father, we're so humbled and thankful for the brand-new day you have blessed us with. You tell us to be glad and rejoice in it, and for good reason. You are our God that is our Creator. You are a God that is good. You're a God that, Father, tells us to bring all cares to you because you care for us. Father, you're all-powerful. You are all and in all. You have demonstrated your love, Father, through the death barrel resurrection of the Lord Jesus Christ, and we're eternally grateful. Father Job said that all breath is a gift from you. And we recognize that, Father, the average human being takes approximately 26,000 breaths on a daily basis. And we often take those breaths without ever you being on our mind, and what a gift they are. Father, I come to you because you do tell us Malware care. You made a way for us to know you personally through your word, and you tell us to pray for our government leaders, and rightfully so. Father, they have a heavy, heavy burden. They have a responsibility, not only to the people of Brevard County, but to you as well. They're called to this position, and they have decisions that they must make constantly. And, Father, I can only imagine the pressure oftentimes in those decisions. So I pray that you give them wisdom in their occupation that you've called them to. And, Father, may it be the wisdom that you give them, Father, and we'll thank you for that. For the people that are here to speak tonight, Father, may they voice themselves, and this is the great thing about our country, our county, that they're able to do just that without punishment. And so, Father, may they do it in a temperament that is pleasing to you. May this be a meeting that people can walk away from knowing that, Father, your presence is here. And, Father, we'll thank you for all you do, and it's in Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, sir. We have a quorum. I'm going to call this meeting to order. Mr. Tabaya?
Please stand and join me in the... Hi. Ladies and gentlemen, the United States of America, and to the God who has sent us a nation under God, in his name, we are pleading justice for our...
We are moving into minutes for approval. Commission?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Zanka.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Tabaya. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Our next item is a resolution, and Ms. Addison, Mayor, are you here? Come on up. Typically, we have people approach us to do these, but when I heard the story of... Right up here, sweetheart, bring your family. Well, you know what? She looks like she could do a pretty good job up here. You guys are welcome to come up with her, too, Stell, if you want to come up. And when I heard her story of what she had been accomplishing, I wanted to do this one. So thank you for all you do. I'm going to read this, and if you want to say a few things, but we're really proud to have you in the community, and I think you're quite the leadership we have rising up in the future. Whereas Ms. Addison Mayor is a nine-year-old student from the Titusville area, has made it her mission to volunteer 800 hours this year to clean up the environment. Whereas Addison is a Girl Scouts leader, a national park volunteer, who has taken action in a big way to earn her badges and take opportunities to connect with mentors while evolving as a leader working towards the President's Lifetime Volunteer Award. Whereas she has gone daily to the Port St. John Boat Ramp, Nicole Park, and monthly to Canaveral National Seashores, working on her goals of making a change for the environment, wildlife, and the Indian River Lagoon by cleaning up cigarette butts, consumer waste, fishing lines, and other waste that's carried by the wind into the area. Whereas Addison assists Fight for Zero, Ms. Stell Bailey, by reporting and helping document river foam, deceased fish, and potential algae blooms throughout with photography and videos. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, does hereby recognize and commend Addison Mayor for volunteering above and beyond to become a hero for Brevard County's environment and beautiful future. Thanks to her enthusiasm, leadership, and your efforts in this community, it is my pleasure to make a motion, if I could, this day, for this resolution for Ms. Addison.
Thank you.
I have a motion by...
Pass the gavel.
Oh. Make a motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by...
Motion by Commissioner Pritchett. Second by Commissioner Goodson. Should have passed the gavel to make the motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
Do you want to say a few things?
Um, I'm good.
Okay.
We have a little plaque for you.
Commissioners, do you have anything you'd like to have polled? Seeing none, can I have a motion to approve consent?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Zanka. Second by Commissioner Tabaya. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes 5-0. Ms. Mary Ellen, are you here, ma'am? Oh, there you are. We have a lot of cards under public comment for the first one, and I just want to, Ms. Mary Ellen, because I think a lot of these are for Manatee Hammock, and I'm going to let her bring you some information because I think there's some bad information going around. So, Ms. Mary Ellen?
Good evening. Mary Ellen Donner, Brevard County Parks and Recreation Department Director. On October 11th, 2022, the Board of County Commissioners executed and adopted a resolution that increased non-resident camping fees at our three Manatee Hammock Campground, in Titusville, Wickham Park Campground in Melbourne, and Long Point Park down in just north of Sebastian. With the fee changes that were instituted, there were also a couple of reservation fees that were, reservation procedures that were adopted. One was the stay was changed from 169 days to 90 days, 90 consecutive days. The reservations, non-residents had 395 days in advance to make reservations. We gave Brevard County residents an additional month, so additional 13 months in advance for Brevard County residents to make reservations and out of county a year. We also added a premium fee of $2 per site if it was a water sewer waterfront, and that particular premium fee was for each of, not resident or non-resident. It was attached to a site rather than a resident or non-resident. I can answer any questions that the board may have, or I can answer any questions after the public comment.
Okay. Ms. Mary Ellen, would you give us a date again when we made these changes?
The changes were in regular session, October 11th, 2022, and the vote was 5-0.
So it was a while ago, so we're not doing anything different currently?
So we actually implemented the fees effective November 15th of 2022, so those fees have been in effect approximately three months.
Okay, so if that helps with some information, because some of the calls I got thought the changes were happening now, we're about to make more changes, so it's good for clarification.
It is not contemplated at this point unless it's so, the board so desires to make additional changes.
Right. So I just want to give that information out, if that helps with some of the questions you guys might have with cards. Mr. Heffelfinger, we just found your card in the pile for the F item. Did you want to come up and give a comment, sir? I'm sorry we missed it. It got kind of...
Okay. There's a good crowd here today.
I think it says, because it says appointment, we thought it said applicant, and so it got...
No, no problem. Rick Heffelfinger, 2000 Juniper Drive, District 1. I had a, I know you just kind of did the approval of the appointments, but I was trying to find, there's a lot of appointments there that were summaries, and they're for districts that have new guys in them. And I was wondering where the scoring sheet was? Was there scoring on those, or is that not done?
You can ask those commissioners. I don't do that. We just...
I mean, that's just a general question. I just was wondering, since those guys were new, when the scoring was, and did they have a chance to weigh in on those appointments?
If, do you have something you do like that, Commissioner Felton, that, I don't want to put them on the spot, if you want to answer, sir.
Didn't have a lot of applicants for those particular boards.
Okay.
So we advertised this for more than a month. I think it was on Facebook, county site, and it was sent out in a press release, so those were the only individuals who were interested, and they have been serving on those boards, have a history of that, so...
So you don't have to score if there's not anybody competing for a position then, right? So no scoring was required?
No.
Because I questioned also, I know that we had Kurt Smith put on Searle, and I know that's coming up later, and I don't remember seeing a scoring card on that either, I'm not sure.
I think it's commissioners' choice. We just, we get to pick who we're putting on the boards for our appointees.
Okay.
These are district-specific appointments.
Oh, so you don't even need to take appointments? You can just grab people and stick them on there? You don't have to even advertise?
I mean, if we wanted to, I think...
We do...
I think it was John's, right?
Right. We do if we don't have any, we do if we don't have any coming up, but the commissioners are allowed to point who they want to the boards.
Okay.
Because they're advisory boards for us, so...
I thought that was an interesting choice, considering he wanted to do away with the manatees, so that's a...
Thank you.
Okay, sir. All right, we're going to move into public comment. I have Ms., or Miss, I think it's Ms. Yupsira?
Madam Chair.
Mister?
Just one additional item. We did eliminate the 30-day camping fee, so everyone pays daily now.
Thank you.
So you're aware.
Thank you. You have a really neat name, sir. If you would say it in the microphone, so I don't miss it.
It's Yupsira Adera.
Thank you.
So, good evening, everyone. I'm here today with the U.S. Small Business Administration to talk about the loans that we offer to Hurricane Nicole survivors. So I work for the Office of Disaster Assistance, where we offer long-term, low-interest loans to homeowners, business owners, and private nonprofit organizations. So the two types of loans that we provide are called physical disaster loans and economic injury disaster loans. The former is given to homeowners and business owners in order to repair or replace disaster-damaged real estate, and the economic injury disaster loan is given to businesses as working capital in order to help them meet their necessary financial obligations. It's important to understand that for homeowners are eligible to, up to $200,000 to repair or replace inventory and business equipments and also real estate, and businesses are eligible up to $2 million. Homeowners are also eligible up to $40,000 to repair or replace personal property such as clothing, furniture, and automobiles. It's also important to understand that the interest rate on these loans are pretty low. Interest rates are as low as 3.3% for businesses, 2.3% for nonprofit organizations, and 2.31% for homeowners and renters. So we have this thing where there's a lot of benefits that we provide at the SBA, and the first benefit is, for the first year, there's a 12-month deferment plan, which, if you take out a loan for the first year, you won't have to pay back until after the first year, and the interest rate will not start to accrue until after the first year. The SBA can also increase a loan as much as 20% of their physical damages as verified by the SBA for mitigation purposes, and that's to improve the resiliency of your homes and businesses so that you can build back better. In order to be eligible for an SBA loan, the person or business must be in a declared disaster zone. You must also be able to have acceptable credit to the SBA and show your ability to repay these loans. The deadline to apply for the Hurricane Nicole is February 13, 2023, and the deadline for the economic injury disaster loan is September 13, 2023. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Just for clarification, do you work with the government?
Yes.
Thank you.
U.S. Small Business Administration Public Information Officer.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Commissioner Goodson has a question, sir.
If your home is mortgaged, where do you fall in line against the home? If you loaned the money to rebuild, would you be second in line?
Yes. If your home is mortgaged, first of all, what we do is we ask our applicants to apply first with FEMA. So once they apply with FEMA, then they send them to SBA. And so if you do not qualify under SBA, we send you back to FEMA, and then you're eligible for more grants.
And if you, if your home's mortgage, mortgage, you probably are owned, you have an equity in it, so therefore the loan through you would be the equity amount that you have in your home.
Correct.
Thank you.
And also, one last thing. We cover whatever insurance doesn't cover. So we help uninsured and the underinsured, but we don't give additional money to more than the insurance. If your insurance doesn't cover it, then...
Roger on.
You also made a statement that after the loan is secure, a 3.5% interest, or something like that. What kind of terms do you have in longevity of the loan?
Up to 30 years, individuals can pay back the loans, and that's one of the benefits, up to 30 years, and also people don't have to accept the loan if it's given to them. There's no prepayment penalties, and yeah, the first year is deferred.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move into the rest of these public comment cards. For the, of you, those of you who haven't been in a county commission meeting, we typically don't have a lot of conversation. This is your time to give us comments, so if you have things that you need answered, we'll take notes, and somebody would probably get back to you, just so that, you know, we don't typically have a lot of conversations unless the commissioners have a question. So I just want to let you know that. So I'm going to start with Mr. Hawk Herman. Welcome, sir. If you would state your name and address and...
Good evening. My name is Hawk Herman. I live at 72, was it 75, 25? 72, 75, right. U.S. Highway 1, Manatee Hammock Campground is my temporary residence for the winter. I am a temporary, part-time resident of Florida. I was a resident of Florida for over 20 years. I have family in the area that have been here for over 50 years, so I'm kind of a part of both as residency goes, but I come down here for the winter. I did have some questions, and I understand that the questions, answers could be later coming, but I had hoped to understand more about the policy change for Manatee Hammock as well as the other campgrounds, but more specifically that one, because where I have been living every winter for the last nine years. What prompted such a substantial change? Because it wasn't just a little bit. It's 115% increase in the rates, and then the policy changes for limiting the amount of stay are, again, rather restrictive, and not only to people in my condition that are temporary residents, but to permanent residents. We have a number of people that are residents of Brevard County who are full-time RVers, retired, and that's been one of the affordable ways in which they've been able to live their retired life. And going from 165 or 169, as she said, to 90 days also becomes a bit of a challenge, especially economically with the high rate that it's been increased. And as inflation, we're all aware of, has affected the housing crisis, it kind of adds one more nail in the coffin for those who are on limited budgets, which many retirees and small families are. We have families from all over Florida and Brevard County who also come to the campground. And this is going to be a debilitating effect, so I was trying to understand where, what prompted such a substantial change? Were there any studies done to help concur the conclusion of the decisions that were made? Have there been any discussions with outside private corporations for either management of the property or for development of the property? It's trying to grasp and understand just what's going on here, because it's not only affecting us, it's affecting our friends and families who are full-time residents here in Florida. And then I guess my primary concern along with that is it might be possible to reconsider and reevaluate those prices and the new policy changes to make them more amenable to everybody. The rates, as they've been brought up, are higher than is contemporary. In other words, other RV resorts and other RV campgrounds throughout the region here don't have rates that high.
Thank you.
And that's my three minutes, right?
Thank you.
Okay. So those are my questions and concerns.
If you would, I don't know if you have already, we've got a few emails. If you would reach out to the District 1 office, I will send you the meeting minutes...
Awesome.
And all of those items of how we came to these conclusions and decisions. I think that'll help you a lot.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Ms. Christine Guskey?
Guskey. Can I have our manatee support people just raise their hands? Anyone who was here to support Manatee Hammock? So, good evening. My name is Chris Guskey. My summer home is in Michigan, and my winter home has been at Manatee Hammock Park for the past six years. My husband and I are very saddened that this may be coming to an end due to the changes in reservation rules and very large rate increases, 115%, as Hawk mentioned. My husband and I, along with many of our fellow winter residents, add a great deal to your community in many ways. We pay the fees for our campsites, as well as shop for all of our groceries, clothing, household, and personal items at several area stores. We also engage in entertainment, including we go to Titusville Playhouse, the movies, and other area attractions. Many of us have family and friends that specifically come to the area to visit us while we're here, and they also bring in money from the above things, as well as hotels and rental vehicles. We get our gasoline and service car repairs as needed at local shops. We receive services such as manicures, pedicures, haircuts. Many of us also eat out often at local restaurants and diners. We take our pets for grooming and to local veterinarians. Many of us also have made large purchases recently, vehicles, campers, and even end up purchasing homes in the areas. We also use the RV and other storage units, as well as doctors, hospitals, and labs. Along with bringing the above-mentioned revenue into the area, we are also involved in the community in several other ways. Several churches are attended by our winter residents. Within those churches, we are involved in choirs, Bible studies, fundraising events for churches and local charities. Others of us volunteer at the Salvation Army, the Hummingbird Food Pantry, Samaritan's Purse, homeless item collection and distribution, packing weekend meals for Brevard County schools, and assist by driving blind residents to appointments. We have donated to Secret, we've donated Secret Santa items and have volunteered tutoring and babysitting for Brevard County children. There are many other things people are involved with that I haven't mentioned. I know I speak for others when I say I truly enjoy doing these things in this community that I've lived in and loved, and will be very sad if we are unable to continue coming here and be so involved in this awesome community because of the changes you have made. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Christine.
I have a question.
Yes?
Are you a Brevard County resident or a Michigan resident?
Michigan resident.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Steve Fodor?
Fodor.
Thank you. No fairness, I couldn't tell if that was a P or D, so...
Madam Chair, Counselor. I am here to represent the members or the residents, long-term residents, of Manatee Hammock. Now, I don't know if you're aware of the fact that our rent, with this approximation, is $650 a month. That comes out to $65,000 for the 100 or so residents that are here. In five months, we make or pay $325,000 just to the one park. That's us. Now, if this motion goes through...
The motion was done a long time ago.
Okay, I corrected. When it went through, that the residents here cannot afford, because they're on fixed income, they cannot afford. You will, and I've been told by most of the residents, that they will not reregister. So you're going to lose approximately 100 residents, non-long-term residents, and that is $325,000 worth, right off the top, not to mention the rest of the budgets. If you take the national average, that you pay 25%... If you take the national average, that you pay 25% of your income to your residents and the other 75% for yourself, we calculated that we're paying roughly 33% to, of our budget to the park. So that leaves us with roughly $1,200 more a month. Now, if you lose 100 residents, that's $120,000. And over a five-month period, which we all like to stay here for approximately five months, that's $600,000. Now, along with the rent plus the money that we support this community with, is $925,000. My question to you is, do you think that you could recuperate these kind of losses? Because you will lose them. And your answer is required because we have made other plans already. So please reconsider and put things back. The system is working. Leave it alone. Don't change. Okay? I know you need to adjust for inflation. We could live with a minor adjustment, but 115% is a little bit beyond ridiculous, in my opinion. All right?
Thank you, sir.
Please reconsider.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you kindly.
I'm gonna call the next one up, but this is why I hate the government owning things like this. I hate that we compete with the private sector at all. I almost would rather just sell it and let somebody else run the RV and charge what they charge. Well, you know, maybe come up with a price, but this is, this is where you run into trouble because we try to meet costs. But I don't think county facilities should charge a lot less than the others because then we're competing with the private sector, and I don't think that's fair either. Mr. Claude Black? Thank you.
Commissioners, thank you for this opportunity. Since my first visit, my wife and I, to Manatee Hammock over 14 years ago, we have enjoyed visits to the park every year. Since retiring three years ago, the affordable fee and the six-month reservation period made it an easy choice for us. Given the current economics, I doubt that any RVer questions the need for an increase in Manatee Hammock camping fees. The immediate, or the, I should say, the immoderate 115% fee increase plus other charges, however, brings the daily rate to $48.16 or $1,444 for a 30-day period, far exceeding the rate of some of the neighboring commercial RV parks. And unfortunately, making it unaffordable for my wife and me. This discriminatory rate of the Brevard County residents, I guess you've looked at this scale and you know that the Brevard County residents have a different fee schedule than other residents, is even excessive for them. It amounts to $993 for every 30-day period. The second unfortunate change is limiting the reservation to 90 days. Some of our RV guests travel over 2,000 miles to come and visit Florida. So this 90-day period would be a great hindrance for them in this driving down here and staying for 90 days and having to leave or move someplace else. Therefore, I request the committee, the commissioners, to do three things. Number one, reconsider increasing the daily rate tremendously exceeding the rate of inflation. Second, reconsider imposing a discriminatory rate between the park customers. Third, reconsider, please, the limitations of visiting the Manatee Hammock Park to 90 days rather than the 168 days, which was the previous policy. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chairman, and thank you, committee members.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Marilyn Cummings?
Hi, I'm Marilyn Cummings. My husband and I lived seven months in Minnesota. This is our eighth year being winter residents at Manatee Hammock Campground, and we love it here. We love the trees, we love being near the river. Thank you for giving me a chance to speak for many of us. As we understand it, this whole issue of new rules began with a few unhappy county residents that cannot get last-minute reservations at Long Point Park. Everyone should plan ahead, make reservations way in advance. So if this is true and last-minute reservations is a problem, and we non-Brevard County folks have avoided that, we've been reserving an entire year in advance for many years. We plan way ahead. The changes you've implemented for the 90-day maximum stay won't remedy that problem for those same last-minute campers that call and say, can we get in on the weekend or we want to camp two weeks from now? It's still gonna be full. They won't be able to do that. Limiting hundreds of non-Brevard County winter residents to 90 days and more than doubling our monthly fee will very likely send us to other parks, as other people have mentioned, in other counties or even states where we'll spend our thousands of dollars every winter. Brevard County businesses, that I think are unaware of this change, will surely notice a drop in profits from these new rules. There are other parks in the area with lower fees, better amenities, Manatee Hammock does not have a lot, and they value their long-term campers. Manatee is a community. We're like a family when we get here. During the winter months, we long-term park residents care for our own campsites. Even after the hurricanes, we were the ones in cleaning our campsites up. We abide by all rules of the campground and we are respectful of staff and buildings. We are being forced to look for a future winter campground and have already found several in this area that offer more to campers and have lower fees. Many of these parks even give their longtime winter campers first chance at reservations before they accept new folks, and they have no length of stay limits. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Kay Rice? If you would just state your name and address and.
Hello, I'm Kay Rice. My permanent home is in Massachusetts, in Otis, Massachusetts, Western Mass. Thank you for allowing us to speak at this meeting. We have tried to keep our comments to a minimum, and you may be glad to hear that I will be the last speaker. We don't know if there is any possibility that you will revisit the extreme increase in the price and change in rules for the camping, for those camping at Manatee Hammock. We hope you will. Manatee Hammock is a second home, a close community for many of us. Some of us have come here for over 25 winters, and many of us were hoping to do the same. We believe we play a positive role in the economy and in church and other volunteer community activities. We spend additional money here that locals using the park are unlikely to spend. If we no longer come to Manatee and Brevard County, both our presence and our spending will be missed by the greater Titusville community and certainly by Manatee Hammock. With the seasonal non-Brevard County residents no longer coming, there may be more calls to the local police due to more crimes such as thefts. We watch each other's campsites. We know who belongs where. Having mostly weekend and short-term campers will make more work for the office staff and for the maintenance staff. There will be empty campsites during the week. Have studies been done to assure that the park will continue to be self-sustaining? The county doesn't need to put money into Manatee Hammock. We understand that prices are going up all over, even if most of us are not receiving any increase in our income. Most of us could work with a reasonable increase, but more than double is, just can't work for most of us. We may be able to find other campgrounds in other parts of Florida or in other states. We will find campgrounds with more amenities and at a lower price, but we are unlikely to find the community that we have built at Manatee Hammock over the years. We thank you again for your time and attention at this meeting and urge you to reconsider the dramatic price increase and change of rules. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That's all that I have for the Manatee Hammock group. I just want to ask you, please, to reach out the District One office. We'll send you all the minutes and the data of why we did what we did. And you guys are delightful and you're respectful, and I hope you have a wonderful evening. I hope whatever we end up moving forward with, whether it stays or whatever, you're able to still come and enjoy the community, but thank you for coming. I have Mr. Michael Yowch. That would've been a fun name to grow up with, sir.
Many nicknames.
Okay. Yes, sir. What can you have for us today?
All right. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Michael Yowch. I live at 565 Indian Bay Boulevard, Merritt Island, and I represent a group of citizens from Merritt Island. And we would like to congratulate our new representative, Tom Goodson, and look forward to working with him on many items that affect our island. Our informal group has studied many of the challenges that face Merritt Island and have spoken with communities that compare in population and our geography. Several county commissioners in the past commissioner meetings in response to Merritt Island citizens voicing concerns about the island issues have asked, why doesn't Merritt Island incorporate? To give us residents the control to deal with the challenges and future planning. We believe that it's time to explore the economic impacts of that possible action by conducting a feasibility study to incorporate Merritt Island. Our initial conversations with experienced Florida entities that conduct this type of study indicate the expense of the study would be in the range of $50,000, $60,000, maybe less. And would take approximately three months working with the county staff to receive the results. After the results of the feasibility study are received, the residents of Merritt Island can understand the economic impact of incorporating and decide if moving forward towards incorporation will assist in the following: preserving the history of Merritt Island, prioritizing and increasing the responsive time to Merritt Island infrastructure needs, increasing Merritt Island's sense of community, and preventing our island from becoming a parking lot between Cocoa and Cocoa Beach, attracting and encouraging new businesses, removing blight from our island, ensuring decisions are made at the local government level, prioritizing conservation of our miles of shoreline, as well as protecting our wildlife areas. I'm making a formal request on behalf of our volunteers and ask that you enter into the minutes today, today's meeting, that Brevard County Commissioners approve the funding for a feasibility study to determine the economic impact of incorporation for Merritt Island residents. If you have any questions, I'd like to bring up one of my team members that can talk about the different entities we've talked to. Do you have questions?
I don't know, but Mr. Commissioner Goodson does have a slight answer.
If this was to go through, then it would appear on the ballot for a vote. When?
November 24th.
24th, okay. I would urge all the commissioners to grant this acceptance for them to make their study because, you know, as time has gone on, there's been issues with zoning issues, painting buildings over there. So if they want to step out on their own, I would be the first to recommend that we agree to help them fund it and get a, now if it fails, I think, when was it done last? Does anybody remember what it was?
Eleven.
2011?
Yes.
Everybody looks at John Denihoff. Why is that?
And how'd the vote go then?
It was negative.
What were the numbers like?
I didn't live here at that time, so I don't know. I think part of the issue was probably how it was presented to the residents. You know, most people, if they think they're gonna have to pay more taxes, just say no. And we have a committee that's gonna work very diligently to present it in a positive package to the residents.
Commissioners, it wasn't, it did not go to a vote, a referendum at that point. There was a lot of discussion in the community, but ultimately it did not go forward.
I believe the last vote was a referendum in 1988 when the voters rejected it.
That sounds consistent with what my recollection is.
Well, that's quite a long time ago. It's time for us to try it again, maybe.
Okay, so do you want the staff to came back to us with the cost of the study?
The feasibility study?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you asked, please?
Would it be a good starting point for you guys to come back with what the cost of the feasibility study is to move forward?
We could take a look to see what the, what we would expect the cost to be and come back and report that to the board, yes, ma'am?
We've reached out to three different entities and received quotes from them. So they vary in that $50,000, $60,000 range.
We'd have to go out to RFP.
I'm sorry.
We would have to go out to a competitive bid for that. I think the board would have to move it approving the, I mean, if the board has interest in moving forward, we can certainly talk about it.
Yeah. Commissioner Tabia, you're on, sir.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Commissioner Zonka mentioned that I think would have to go out to RFP. I would like to, I would like that to come out of Commissioner Goodson's office, but as a heads up, I certainly would support it. But, you know, I don't know where he stands on this, and he's certainly got boots on the ground there. So if you, if you do go forward with this, I think in a minimum, you'd have the support if you want a motion to begin the RFP process, that's fine. But if it does come back at a reasonable cost, you would have my support when you're counting votes.
Madam Chair, I just love the way you put it on me, okay? You don't want to have a chair there?
I don't have a problem with that, Madam Chair, as long as, and I look to have money left in my account when the year is over, but I don't think I want to agree to fund it all when they're paying taxes over there. So, but I will help if there's money in my account, okay?
Why don't we look at Myra as well?
Yeah, why don't we look and see if you can find a financing with the county, get with them, and then come back and let us know how you want to do it. I'm in agreement, I would, I would want to do this, so.
Okay.
Commissioners, just so you know, I'm sorry, Commissioner, the county can fund the feasibility study. Myra, on the other hand, is not authorized to fund the feasibility study for incorporation.
But I know we have some budget flexibility with what we do with each of our districts. I think that's Commissioner Tabia is alluding to right there. So if you would just come back with that and let us know what you got, sir.
Madam Chair, Myra had come. I'd spoken with some folks in Myra about this, and the county attorney's office had done a memo that's very good about the steps and order that this should go through. So I would.
You should've started with that, Commissioner Tabia.
Well, no, this isn't my district. There was an empty seat, so that's why I started the process. So I encourage everyone to get a hold of the county attorney's office. That result was shared with Myra, so certainly there, they have that. But I encourage the rest of you guys, Morris's office did a great job on that, and he's got dates, timelines, estimated costs, all that good nonsense, so you're able to look at that.
Commissioner Goodson, I do believe you have our support on this. We think it's something that would really benefit the Merritt Island area and help you do your job even better.
Thank you.
So I think there is the support here to do this.
Madam Chair, may I ask Morris one question?
Most certainly.
If that, Morris, if you've got numbers, were their numbers that far off?
I'm sorry, I don't have cost figures for what it would cost currently to do the feasibility study. That, that wasn't part of the scope of what I did. I know that a study was done in the past at 21,000, but that was a pretty distant pass, so I wouldn't use that necessarily as representative of today's cost.
Okay. Now, where would they go now? Would they go to Frank? Where would they go?
Well, we would be looking for the board direction. It would be a motion from this board to tell us to move ahead with an RFP to solicit someone to do a feasibility study and see what the cost came back, and then we would bring that back to the board for consideration as to whether or not to move forward.
All right. Madam Chair, would you like for me to make a motion?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to. I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff to pursue this idea so we can get more knowledge or more understanding of the cost.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Is that okay?
Is that clear?
Thank you.
And by that, you're saying to go out for the RFP?
I will second that motion to go out for an RFP.
And also, can I throw in one little quick thing, too, that you would go ahead and identify a source of funding to fulfill the feasibility study?
See if the county's got it in their budget somewhere.
Well, it would have to come from, it would have to come from the general fund. So we would, you know, we would have to do it at that point either through an allocation from somewhere else where that money is, at a reserves or the mid-year supplement.
I think that we'll give you discretion to go through and look and see what you think's appropriate because you know how we do with districts here anyways. We do our own district.
Right. And what we'll do is we'll bring, we'll bring back the results of the RFP. If you authorize it, we will have a selection committee for that. We'll bring the results back to the board and identify the funding at what time that would be.
Okay. We lost our clerk's office on our motion, so can... I think the motion was, ma'am, that we would go out with staff coming back with, with RFP and a source of funding that they're going to identify for us. Is that good? Commissioner?
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine, Madam Chair.
Okay. And I have a motion, and I had a second by, I'm sorry. Commissioner Tobias, wonderful. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. Okay. And you must be Ms. Susan?
I am. Thank you. Susan Arroyan, 230 Sykes Point Lane, Merritt Island, District Two. Thank you for approving our request. And question moving forward, because obviously some of us are new to this. What is the timeframe in terms of putting together that RFP, getting it out, and getting answers back? Because obviously, making a November 24 deadline, it's about, what, eighteen months? It's pretty aggressive. So we'd just like to understand the timeframe and who we can work with offline to kind of get our project plan in place.
I would estimate it would be about three to four months to have the RFP drafted, sent out, considered, and then we'll bring it back to the board. Probably between four and six months, actually, to get that whole process and back to the board. So that would be by, before the board breaks would be the ideal time before the board breaks in June.
Madam Chair, may I? But at the same token, you need to start working now with the understanding that you could get approval or not get approval. Do not waste any time convincing your public or your constituents that this is a great idea. Or either, when you get involved in it, you might come back and say, "This is not a good direction." So, but I would not waste time waiting on...
Absolutely.
You know, you might tell your people that this is all on a maybe and a bet.
Absolutely. We have a committee in place that's already putting in place committees to talk about how we will approach the public. Obviously, without having the actual data, we can only do so much.
Correct.
But definitely, we have started the process, so we appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Tobias, I'd like, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry.
Commissioner Felton?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just, you're talking about dates and timelines. I believe that the last time, the last chance that the commission has to put something before the voters' referendum for the general election is in August.
You're good. Thank you. So if we want to put anything else on the ballot, the first part of August, we need to have ready to...
I believe that's right.
Next year, correct?
Correct. Of 2024, yes, ma'am.
And also, in order for the legislature to enact a municipal charter in their 2024 legislative session, the deadline by statute for them to receive the required feasibility study would be September 4 of this year.
Wonderful. Hey, maybe we can put on there Commissioners would do three terms instead of two.
Yeah.
That was for Tobias. Okay. Wonderful. That's, that's a wonderful surprise. Ms. Brooke Williams?
So they'll never make it.
Oh, yes. Ms. Williams, if you'd say your name and address and...
Brooke Williams, 2568 Mitchell Avenue in East Mims. I've been a Brevard County resident for more than forty years, twenty-five of those years being in North Titusville or North Brevard. And I actually live on my husband's family named street. The Mitchells were granted a certificate from Brevard County for being a Mims pioneer family established in the 1930s. And I'm here because we have a speeding issue. And almost two years ago, I started the process to have speed humps installed on my road. When the traffic study could not be fully completed, I was told that you, Ms. Pritchett, actually approved the humps.
With the CDBG funds we're working on.
And that it was being sent to Mr. Golden's office for funding.
Yes, and we got approved for the funding.
Correct. So now I'm being told...
That there has to be repairs done on the road. So now I have to find more funding to repair the road before we can put the speed humps in. Because these aren't typically things I fund out of the budget. But we're working very hard creatively to get the funds to do this project. We tried to do the speed study on there, but all of the items got stolen. So we can't even do that again. But these are things typically I don't fund. But since you worked so hard and we actually were able to find some funding, and now we got to fix your road because we got some issues. But as soon as we get this done, we're moving forward as fast as we can to try to accomplish this.
Because I was told, I actually spoke with the superintendent in Road and Bridges. He actually was on my road the other day. And he told me there's like a year's waiting list just to get on the repavement.
We're working on this right now. You're, I thought we were going to have an appointment with you.
I have been trying.
We've been trying to get just some, some information. But we've been, we've been talking about this almost daily, trying to figure what we can do.
I was going to say, everybody probably knows my name in every department.
And you're related to Imparto, too, right?
No, ma'am.
Michelle Imparto?
No, ma'am.
No relationship? Well, we've been getting calls from her dad, too, who's a pastor over there, too. So, yeah, we're, we're working on this, just so you know.
Okay, because I, it's like, it's just been so hard. And it's like, you know, and then I see, like, you know, they're saying, "Well, now it has to be repaved." And, but I see, like, speed humps going up on Indian River last year, for example, which needs to be repaved, but they put them...
That, that wouldn't have been in the county. We have different things that we do. But I, we've worked really hard to try to get this project in, so you're not being ignored.
Okay. Because that's how I feel. I feel...
It's everything in government.
Like completely neglected.
Well, just so you know, if we hadn't have found the funds, I don't fund speed humps. I know this is something that's going to, you're going to enjoy having, but I...
Absolutely.
I think people speed in between them. But since you worked so hard and we got the funding, we're working on them. So as soon as we're able now to fix the road, which ended up being our next hurdle, we, you're on the, you're on the docket to get this done.
I super, super appreciate you. Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Good evening, Sandra Sullivan. So we all love our lagoon. This is what it looked like around 2010. It looked beautiful. And over, you know, obviously, we're all very concerned about the condition of the lagoon. This was New Year's Eve. This was reported from Mel Beach all the way up to Pinida, various photos. This particular photo, to the person who took it, caused them to cough in their eyes water, which may be consistent with a harmful algae bloom. From the lagoon plan, and this is well-known, that the steep decline in the aerial mass of the seagrass started in 2010. And why that's significant is, what changed in 2010? It's not the muck. We've had the muck. I mean, there wasn't a dramatic change in the muck. There wasn't sewage dumps because we've had sewage dumps over the years. What changed in 2010? What changed was the state switching to broadcast spraying of herbicides. And this took time for science to catch up. Herbicides kill seagrass. They persist in saltwater. They kill, they kill algae, good algae, and they feed the bad algae as a phosphorus food source. What we voted for, what the people voted for, I think is really important. What we voted for was capital improvements and capital maintenance projects. And also, another thing I talked about, reducing pollution and the oversight and audits. And looking at that, what we were sold in 2016 was putting money to AWT plant upgrades. So in talking about the muck, for example, Turkey Creek, the FIT study showed that the muck flux wasn't coming from the septic. It was coming from the sewer plant in a higher amount. So one of the role of the oversight is not only to evaluate the projects originally, but to evaluate the actual performance that they are delivering. I do not feel that this is being met in the lagoon plan. There are some this year, but not in previous years. The, if you take the percentage that we're spending on muck in this report, it says 27%. But if you take out inflation, which is skewing the numbers, it's actually 36%. The amount that we are spending on harvesting aquatic weeds because hydrilla is exceeding, it's like a monster plant for sucking up that stuff. And we just spray it, and then it dies and releases it. But other counties use what's called STA, Stormwater Treatment Areas, to suck up those nutrients. It's very effective. We are not deploying technologies that other places use. So thank you very much.
I have one more public comment card. Mr. Steve Mitchell? It's okay. Thank you.
Hey, my name is Steve Mitchell, and I live at 4621 James Road, Cocoa, Florida, for 20 years. And the only, I wasn't really planning on talking today, but when I heard the Manatee people come up, I am a, my also name, AKA Satellite Steve. So I do satellite RV systems full-time. And my busiest season is right now when the snowbirds are here. And all my people, I'm usually at Wickham Park because Manatee Hammock is Hammock, and it's all treated. So the systems I put in are usually at Wickham Park and Long Point and places like that around the area. But all my Wickham Park customers that I've had for 10 years, they're all complaining about the same thing that the Manatee Hammock people are complaining about with the rates going up and the timeframe. But the biggest thing that you might understand, not understand, and they don't understand is, and I see it full-time because I'm here full-time, I'm also a disc golfer. So I'm at Wickham Park three times a week playing disc golf. And whenever I play disc golf, I have signs on my truck, so I'm riding around advertising. But when I ride around advertising during the summer, it's all tenors, a lot of tenors. A lot of more crime is going on during the summer months at Wickham Park. I don't know about Manatee Hammock or some of the other parks, but I'm at Wickham Park a lot. So that's, I'm just letting you guys know that's what I see when the snowbirds aren't here. And I know the snowbirds are out of town, so they're not your constituents. I am, and I'm just telling you what I see. Okay?
Thank you, sir.
All right.
All right. We are done with the public comments, so we're going to move into unfinished business. Ms. Virginia, how, do you want to go ahead and introduce it? I do have one public comment card, so I think after you do that, I will do the public comment, and then we'll talk about how you want us to vote and make a motion, ma'am.
Okay. Good evening, Commissioners. This is three appointments to the Save Our Indian River Lagoon Citizen Oversight Committee. On October 25th of 2022, the board reappointed 10 of the current members, 10 of the 14 current members and directed staff to advertise the remaining four seats. On December 6th of 2022, the board considered the one applicant for the board's finance seat and appointed Kurt Smith. So that leaves three seats to be filled. One of those is a League of Cities seat. So Action One is to consider appointment of Don Dice, who was selected by the League of Cities for their vacant technology alternate seat. And then Action Number Two is to review the applications that you have in your packet, their resumes and reference letters, rank candidates to fill the county commission's voting member seats for real estate and tourism. Take the public comment card. I'll tally your rankings and provide the results before the end of the meeting so that you can appoint the top-ranked candidates.
On to you. Commission, are you okay with doing a vote right now? Or do you have any comments about the recommendation for the League of Cities, Mr. Donde? So I'm going to do the comment cards, but if you would think about that, and then we'll come back for a vote. Mr. Rick Hefelfinger, sir?
Rick Hefelfinger, District One. It's kind of a follow-up to the original question. I wasn't assured, I wasn't clear that you guys could just appoint these positions. So I don't quite know why, or some of them have to be voted by you guys? Or can you just take the ones allocated and say, "That one, that one, that one"? It seems like a conflict of, you know, are we actually evaluating all the candidates? Or are we just filling the ones we want to fill? And, and also, the, there is a ranking sheet, but it's dated 2019. And I don't know if that's the right ranking sheet or if that's an old one. I think it has the right names on it, though.
This one, we don't appoint per district. We do a consensus on the board. So what we do is we're given all the data, the resumes, we study them, and then we, we rank them how we feel that we'd, we'd have them to best of what we think they would do. Then Ms. Virginia adds them up, then we get a consensus, and that's the person we nominate.
So Kurt Smith was directly appointed. Is that unique to finance? Without, he wasn't...
Who are you talking about, sir? I'm sorry.
Kurt Smith is to the sorrow.
That's, that's, that's something different right now, Commissioner Tobias. If you, I don't, I think that's different. We did that differently as a...
Commissioner, he was the only applicant for that seat. So, you know, how do you rank one candidate?
So that was advertised, closed, and then he was...
Yes, it was advertised, closed. He was the only applicant. That's why that one moved forward.
But all fairness, just so you know, it wouldn't matter who else was in there. I probably would have picked him. I've never seen more passion for the lagoon than him.
Yeah, he's passionate about the Manatees. Thank you.
Well, he's passionate about the lagoon. He makes a lot of good choices. All right. So, Commissioner, what's your pleasure as far as the, the, I'm sorry, I'm getting off here. The League of Cities, oh, another one?
Sandra Sullivan, you popped a card in there real quick. Are you here, ma'am? Is it for this?
Sandra Sullivan, South Patrick Shores. So the ordinance 16-15 spells out the appointment process. And from what I saw is the appointment of Kurt Smith. Whether he's the best candidate or not is about following the, the actual ordinance, which is the law for Brevard County. And the process is outlined in the ordinance. I would suggest, reading the ordinance is really important. The application process for applying for the lagoon had not closed when he was appointed. And that, that's the reason it brings up a concern. So under the appointment process, the county commissioners shall call for interested volunteers to submit their applications to Natural Resources prior to a date, yada, yada. They will, the, each commissioner will review the qualifications of the remaining applicants and score them one to three. Department staff will tabulate the ranking sheets to select the members for the remaining fields of expertise and alternatives for the remaining three fields of expertise. I guess the, the point I think that Rick is trying to make is that when we have procedure and policy in place that we follow those policies, whether he's the best candidate or not, it's not about that. It's just about following the county procedure and policy. So respectfully, you know, I think that may need to be looked at. Thank you.
I think we should speak to the county attorney on that issue as to, because we, that was reviewed with the county attorney's office before that item was brought back to the board.
We, we did review that. The application period closed prior to the appointment. And it did follow the policy and procedure, and specifically the ordinance cited by Ms. Sullivan. What she referred to was actually the initial appointment process for the board as a whole when it was first formulated. We followed the process provided for replacement members when they're required.
Thank you, sir.
So we did it by policy, by 100% correctly?
Yes, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay. So, Commissioner, do we have a vote to go ahead and assign the appointment of Don Diaz? Motion by Commissioner Zanka? Second by Commissioner Tobias. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. And Ms. Virginia, we will see you back at the end of the meeting. Yes, ma'am?
Yeah. I have results, if you want them.
All ready. Okay. We do it, and we'll make a vote. What do you, what do you have for positions?
Real estate is Barbara Wall Scanlon.
Barbara Wall Scanlon.
And for tourism is Robert Putnam.
Okay. So, Commissioner, can I have a vote to go ahead and confirm these two applicants?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Zanka? Second by Commissioner Goodson. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Passes five zero. Thank you, ma'am, for all you do. All right, moving into new business, Item J1.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board. Item J1 is a consideration of a contract of, for sale and purchase from Michael Terrell for a wastewater treatment plan and water treatment plant relocation for the South Brevard area. Just to give you a little background, the driver of this relocation is due to compliance with state law and also looking at the useful life. We looked at sites, and this parcel became available and thus we went through the process with land acquisition. And thus, just kind of recapping, there's three options associated with the Board on direction. The first is to accept the offer as presented, which is the 3.5 million. The second is to, for the Board to give direction on a counteroffer of an amount approved by the Board. And the third is to reject the offer and to proceed with utilizing the property to the west of the 80 acres in discussion, which is the Barefoot Bay Water Sewer District that we would repurpose for this relocation.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Tabia, but you have some good input for us, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair, and it's changed a little bit based on the discussion that preceded this. So, Commissioner Goodson, please pay attention to the end of the motion here. What's important is to remind the Board that these $3 million were, came out of District 3 and were approved by the Board for the ARPA funds to be designated to this project. The suggested price of $3.5 million for the private property purchase option is outrageous. Two appraisals were done in June and July of 2022. They came back at 2.65 and 2.75, and thus fair market value was addressed at 2.7. The first appraisal is almost six months old and the second is approaching. And we all know what has happened to the market in the last six months, not just us. Forbes did an article where they described, quote, "Many experts and analysts have come forward with predictions real estate prices starting to fall in 2023 due to the fears of possible recession. Economics feel that the home prices should drop even more given mortgage rate increases." So, that was from a recent Forbes article. So, I would like to suggest that we reject the price of $800,000 over the determined fair market value. Just to be clear, if the Board wanted to go forward with this, this would require a supermajority and everyone would have to, other than me, would have to agree that this was fair. Plus, it's an additional $500,000 more than what was initially appropriated. Now, the staff did a great job, and in their agenda report, they have Alternative 1 that shows the option cost difference to move forward on the land that is under the control of the county. That cost is $2,198,500. So, economically, this figure makes the most sense for the county, and I propose it be sent as a counteroffer to the private property owner and provide him or her with 14 days to respond. Now, should the property owner reject this offer, I would like to give staff the permission to pursue the Alternative 1 option. So, we've seen prices decrease and we know what it will be to get that other property ready. So, that's what I'm suggesting that we offer that individual. I will, I'd like to hear whether, what ideas the rest of the Board has and then tender a motion that incorporates this and a cherry on the top at the end.
Okay. Commissioner Tabia, I don't see a light on yet. So, what you're wanting to do is counteroffer with back to where really the market probably is right now?
Madam Chair, you want me to go ahead and make the motion?
Yeah, but let me, let me ask you this real quick. So, I was talking to staff when we went through it, and another idea they had was to just go ahead and transfer the property from Barefoot Bay. But again, this is your ARPA funds, so I'm gonna, I know you've done the most work on it, but I just wanted to, yeah, just restate your, I'm with you.
Okay, and that, that's incorporated in here. So, the tendered offer would be 2.198. Remember, I'd appropriated $3 million, so that comes at the end. So, I move to reject the offer of $3.5 million for the purchase of 3920 Edston Drive Grant, Florida 32949, and send a counteroffer of 2.198,500 with a deadline to respond within 14 days. Should the counteroffer be accepted, the Board authorize staff to complete the purchase of the property. Upon the counteroffer being rejected by the property owner, staff will then be authorized by the Board to move forward with Alternative 1 option, which includes any necessary action that might be needed taken to prepare the District of Barefoot Bay Water and Sewer Parcel Number 30-38-08-001-1 for the development of a water wastewater facility, and here we go, and leftover funds go to facilitate the incorporation study for Merritt Island.
Is that a motion, Madam Chair?
I think it was. Did you guys get all that?
I think the simplified way to repeat what he said was Option 2, they would have 14 days for the 2.1 million, and if they don't, we would proceed with what, the same as what is in Option 3, which is basically reject it and we move forward with the county's property in Barefoot Bay. And so, he said it more eloquently.
I'll second that.
I think I figured that out. I kept looking for 3, but I followed your words, so it was good.
Now, just a question, just to complicate things. So, is the Merritt Island, your commitment to the Merritt Island Fund feasibility study still regardless of what happens with the deal? Because really, that, that's a small amount of money and you'd be well under anyway.
Madam Chair, yeah, absolutely. If we move forward, the cover of the 2.9, sorry, 2.1, there would be a delta of 800,000. I would hope that delta would go with the continued process, whether that be engineering. But yes, I would, either way, whether they, whether they accept it or not, that, and I talked with Morris, it was in the neighborhood of 50 or 60. If it's that amount, it's not going to make a difference one way or another, but I would certainly move forward. And I would like to thank Marcus with Merritt Island for, with Myra for working with me on this, and I think we can certainly move it forward in an expeditious fashion so we can meet those deadlines that, that Morris put forward.
Okay, I'll second your motion. Commissioner Goodson, I'll reach you to it.
That's all right, she can have it.
Okay. I got a motion and a second and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, passes 5-0. Thank you. Commissioner Tabia, you keep holding out things to the very end here. All right, we're in Item J2. Commissioner Tabia, I think this is yours, correct? Advisory boards? And I do have one card, sir, so would you like to hear from the card before you introduce it or?
Sure, sure, Madam Chair. Does it say which, which of the?
Art in Public Places.
Got it.
Okay. Ms. Darlene Hunt?
I live 125 West Christopher Lee Road on Merritt Island, and I wish you'd gone ahead with your presentation before you had me come and speak because I'm not really quite sure what all you've got in mind. So, Madam Chairman, Commissioners, and a welcome, special welcome to our new Commissioners, Commissioner Felton and Commissioner Goodson. So, I know that various appointed advisory board committees under your jurisdiction have been under review. I think it's good to look at functions from time to time to see if there's still value in the work that's being formed by these volunteer organizations. So, I'd just like to share my experience with the Art in Public Places Advisory Committee. I've been involved for several years off and on, and the Art in Public Places is led by Lynn Brazina. She's assisted by Sandy Miller, and these two ladies are the most efficient team that you could ever meet. Their meeting records, the minutes, the attendance, the monthly placement of art, financial statistics updated every month for our meetings, and meetings take place less than one hour. We quickly take care of business, including the jurying of the new paintings for the program. Most of the time, the minutes are available to us in our email that very same day. I mean, you just can't find any, any more efficient group. In addition to being a committee-appointed member, I'm also participating artist with several paintings placed throughout the Brevard County in places like hospitals, public buildings, businesses like Dixie Crossroads, Lexus of Melbourne, and the Melbourne Airport. So, from time to time, people have mentioned to me, "Hey, I saw one of your paintings at such and such a place." But this tells me that people are seeing the paintings in, not just paintings, but the art that's on display, and they even take note of who the artist is. And one time, one time a lady friend that mine was in a doctor's office, and she was with her adult son who had cancer, and she told me she looked up and she saw one of my paintings there, and she felt like I was there with her. You know, so this is like a pretty touching thing for art, to be reaching out to people you don't even know are going to be there. I'm not really familiar with the cost of the program. I know that a substantial amount of the revenue comes from members that are participating and fees from the sales. And I know that you used a figure of 2018 for, for what its cost was. I don't know why, I mean, what are the current expenses? I really don't know that information. But maybe if we need it, Commissioner Tabia, maybe you could pay for that, too. I heard your generosity earlier. Not funny, okay, not funny. Thank you. Anyway, I do see art as a relevant benefit to the quality of life for those that live here as well as those that are visiting, as evidenced by the, oh, did I go with 3 minutes? No way. Okay.
You were nervous. Look how well you did.
Gosh.
Thank you, ma'am, for your information, and you are delightful, so thank you for coming up and talking to us about it.
God bless you. Thank you.
Thank you, God bless you. Commissioner Tabia, sir?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, I've broken this down into five, but I want to give an overall before I get into five. And to be clear, there'll be, I hope there'll be no final motion because I haven't prepared the documents if we were due away with any of these, and when I say aye, I haven't requested county staff to do that. That's the reason I'm doing this is because I didn't want to go through an exercise, and then we didn't use that work product. So, again, I want to thank staff, the county attorney's office, for how they were delving deep into what neighboring counties were doing. They did that very quickly. The clerk's office for providing the resolutions and the ordinances of incorporation, and directors and their staff for spending time with numerous conversations with my office, and I can only imagine other offices as well. So, thank you so much for making this possible. Just to remind the Board, none of these boards are acquired by state statute or federal law. Numerous opportunities have been presented. In fact, I'd, I'd looked back, and there had been no less than six different meetings where doing away with advisory boards had been either mentioned or discussed, and if this goes forward, and I certainly hope it does, there would be one more final vote on this. We have a unique opportunity as conservatives to actually decrease government a little bit here, and we've done this in the past. We've done this relatively recently when we took library boards from 10 to 5. And I want you guys to think how many times your office has been contacted because we've had less library boards, and I think that we'd probably find the same results with, with many of these, with many of these boards. Again, we started with 69 boards, and we're still somewhere in that, that 50 range. So, all these were selected by at least two members of, of this Board to look at whether or not they serve a function that is worthy of the cost and to continue forward. Five particularly got at least two considerations to go forward. So, we'll start with Art in Public Places because alphabetically I put it first. One of, and I sent this all out, one of our five surrounding counties has a similar Board to Art in Public Places. In other words, most of the counties, 80% of those that surround us have no such Board. What services would be lost? Organization of exhibits of art in government facilities? You have to ask yourself, is this a core function of, of government? The cost, as was mentioned, is back from 2018, so one can only imagine that has increased, but that was 78-78, and I didn't want to put staff through gathering that. Again, I thought that it would be close one way or another and not, not worthy of doing that exercise again. That was the first time I brought it up. In addition, all five members up here thought it was at least worth looking at that. So, at the end, I'd like to see if, you know, there were three folks willing to, or I'll throw it out there right now, to, to at least look at the documents that would be required to end Art in Public Places in, in Brevard County, seeing as it's the highest, it's the highest fee here, it doesn't serve a core function of government, and 80% of surrounding counties have no such, no such Board. So, again, I'd, I'd like to see if there's three folks here that are willing to vote on it, not this time, but again, I did not put staff because we'd have to amend ordinance. Some of these are other things that we would have to do to get rid of, so just wanted to find out where everyone was on these, whether or not you wanted to hear it one more time.
Commissioner Zanka?
And, you know, surprisingly, this is the only Board on this list that I would want to keep as far as, you know, of the boards that we're going to consider, we're going to discuss with. And the reason being, and I know you can argue, you know, it's not a core function of government, but, you know, our, our community that comes into these buildings does enjoy the art. We have employees that have art as part of these displays. I know my staff, people who visit in my office even have purchased art from, you know, strangely enough and without knowing from somebody, I guess, I think in growth management that contributes to the Art in Public Places. So, I think that there is a benefit. I think we've already sort of, you know, put our stake in the ground when we decided we weren't going to fund BCA. So, I, I would say keep it for the minimal cost and the fact that, you know, our county employees participate in our public benefits from the art. So, that would be my opinion anyway, but obviously it's up to the Board, but that would be the only one on this list that I wouldn't nix today.
I appreciate it. Do I have anyone else that would be willing to say bye to the, I'm air quoting art that's hanging around public buildings? And I'm sorry, Lexus may have to go in a different direction to keep their customers happy.
I would put it on the list to vote on at the next meeting. Is that, is that what we're asking?
Yes.
I would do that.
So, that's two. Commissioner Goodson, what's your thought, sir?
I, I think that, I would like to see it kept. I mean, what is, what did your comment say about cost? Was that for all five boards or per board? What was the cost?
Madam Chair?
Oh, please.
In, in 2018, it was 78, $7,878. That was 2018, and that took a little bit of time to staff and everyone put together. I did not ask for them to do it. I thought that'd be close one way or another.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question?
Please, sir.
Do, is that for the five or per one individual?
Okay, as, as sent out, I mean, I did put in an attachment, but just, that is just for Arts in Public Places, $7,878 as of 2018.
And just help me understand, Commissioner, what would encompass that cost? Rental on a building, lights, power? I mean, how much does, just tell me that.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, it was mainly staff time that was incorporated in that $7,878. I didn't get it broken down specifics, but that was where the bulk of it was located.
Open discussions, good.
Well, I'm going to vote no on your proposal. I'd like to see it be kept.
And I would just say, I would, you know, I'd be interested to see if some of that staff cost incorporated was the fact that they were here, they had their artwork that was stored in this building, which it no longer is. was stored in this building, which it no longer is. I mean, we use that office now for government business. So I don't know, I would think that that's probably some of that cost.
I find that number --
Mr. Leesonfield.
I don't have the information, what the costs were for 2018. I'd have to pull up what the response was.
Commissioner Tobias, I think there's only two people in favor of it, and that's what you're looking for, right? So I don't think you have the numbers.
Okay, great. We'll move on to the next one, art. I air quote that, art stays. Okay, thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Second one is Building and Construction Advisory Committee. Not one of our surrounding counties. And again, the county attorneys, I didn't do this, the county attorney's office did this, so thank you so much for getting that work done. No other surrounding county has anything similar to this. There are other options that the industry has to get in touch with us. Former Chair Zonka was very good, working hard on the Builders Roundtable. Anyone can come before BOCC at a meeting. Ordinance changes, of course, require two hearings, and folks can speak directly with their county commissioner. It says that the board, the board does not originate anything, even though the ordinance says the committee is further authorized to initiate reviews of code. They do not do that. They do review, they do not initiate that. So the review can be done in a whole myriad of other ways that I just mentioned. This is extremely low-hanging fruit. We are unique in the fact, again, that we are the only one, so I certainly would like to move forward with doing away with the Building and Construction Advisory Committee.
Thanks. Can I certify? I've got two more. Just jump in. I think it's good open talk right now.
What is the cost to keep that board?
Madam Chair.
Just jump in.
The people that serve on these boards for nothing, I admire, and if they made one good call in construction in a year for $2,000, wouldn't that be ample reason to keep them?
Madam Chair, the fact that not one of the surrounding counties has this, the fact that we are unique and someone in the construction industry, what has come out of this board that is a good or a service to the citizens of Brevard County?
Well, are we going to pattern ourselves out of the counties around us, or are we going to pattern ourselves as Brevard County? You know, because I don't know what Orange County does, but I can't imagine Orange County with all the construction they got. I know they have code enforcement officers, I know they've got building permit officers, but sometimes, you know, to have another person look at something in construction and say, hey, this might not be exactly right, would that not be worth $2,000 one time?
So Madam Chair, name one thing they've done, just one thing, and I'll let it go.
Well, they --
One item, one ordinance, one item they've done, and I'll let it go. Right now.
I think right now, so I put them on the spot. Let's see if we got you two more, and then we'll come back with a fuller discussion later.
Could I just answer that question? I think the fats, oil, grease language came out of there that was on --
It might have been reviewed. It did not come out of there.
Okay, well, I think Eddie worked on that, but certainly they went over it, and so that, that was on the agenda today, so.
Commissioner Tobias, I have two more commissioners that want to maybe look at that.
Well, I have one, Madam Chair.
Got two.
No, 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 but Commissioner Zonka said she was for doing away with all of them with the exception of that one.
Unless she just got talked into a different avenue, so.
I mean, it's hard, because I thought when we reviewed this before, we determined that there was no concrete value to this board. I mean, I know we have planning and zoning, we were doing the Builders Roundtables at least twice a year. I don't know, I don't know of what benefit. I'm trying to see it.
Yeah, it didn't come from staff. I mean, that's obviously the board's decision. They have a number of contractors, developers. I think when this was initiated, they wanted a process. And the board years ago adopted this as a way to give them eyes on before something came forward to the board.
But they don't bring us anything.
No, 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 they have not. Well, they could, as Commissioner Tobias already said, but they haven't. They basically review and make a recommendation to the board.
Mr. Zonka, let me take the stress off you and see if Commissioner Felton is supporting it or not.
I'd be okay with putting this on for the next meeting, so.
Commissioner Zonka, then the pressure's back on you, ma'am. How do you feel about it?
We went through all of this before. I've got one here that I'm willing to look at, but I'm just kind of worn out on some of these right now until I establish and see how many people show up to the meetings, because I do like being able to have the ability for people to feel like they're participating in government a bit, and so I'm going to want to see the track records of if they're showing up for meetings or not, so I'm trying to weigh that.
And maybe if it goes on the agenda, and if people want to keep it, they're going to show up to that meeting. So I'm okay with putting it on the agenda.
Okay, we've got that one on the agenda, sir.
And then we'll find out how valuable it is to the people that are on the board, because I've never heard from my member. I don't believe.
Okay. Sir, that's one you got for discussion.
Okay, Madam Chair, the next one?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This is the D2 Canal Dredging Committee. First of all, I looked at the board here. Most of the members of this board are not experts in canal dredging or transportation. I've got a president of a cosmetics company, which is cool, but not really dredging material, a PA at a cosmetic surgery center, and an electrical contractor. So we have staff that is highly qualified and could arguably do a much better job of making empirical decisions. Alternative options, constituents can come to D2 with their issues, or they can speak before the entire board. They certainly can contact staff with any concerns. Only one county, that being Orange, has a similar board, and this board was previously disbanded and was reestablished. So for five years, there was no board, and things went on. So there's no need, as we've proven, to continue forward with this board. The cost is $1,399.
Mr. Goodson, I am interested in your opinion on this, it's your district, sir.
I think it's a valuable service, I mean, because it's in their district, they know those canals, and what, I mean, I'm sure they don't beat staff up saying, let's do this one first and that one second, but if they're willing to serve on that and, you know, make recommendations and follow staff's directions, I have no issue with them. I just find it very funny, for $1,399, we're willing to give up what might be somebody's whole key to life that they enjoy. And how much more are they aggravated in government? I don't have a problem.
Okay, Commissioner Felton, Zonka.
I would yield to Commissioner Goodson on this issue.
Okay, so I think we are, we are no-go on that one, Commissioner Tobias.
Okay, Madam Chair, I have a fallback on this one. The $1,399 comes out of a larger fund. I would hope that we could at least get rid of the $1,399 and put it in the D2 Road and Bridge Fund, so they're at least paying for the administration of this board.
I would definitely not agree with that, because is anybody else paying for the administrative?
Madam Chair, this is the only board, there's only a D2 Canal Dredging. It's the only one.
We're special. No, I don't want us to pay for it.
I'm not supporting that either.
You start cutting my people, then you're going to, you know, it just ends up, we don't want to do that.
Madam Chair, I'm asking that they pay for the own administration of their board.
Hold on, let's just see, do you guys support that?
Is that a motion?
No, it's just whether he puts it on the thing for next conversation or not, so, you know, with or without it. He needs three right now to move forward. No? Okay, no go. Go ahead. Nice try, though.
Just to be clear, the rest of us will be paying to fund that board, even though it only benefits District Two.
I was trying to get it out of your other budget that you had left over.
Madam Chair, I'm sure that you could go through the budget and find the same argument somewhere else.
I know.
Mr. Goodson, you're paid to do that, so I suggest you get off your duff and start making suggestions where you cut the budget.
I think we're getting a rabbit trail here, and I don't want to go back. Time out, I'm going to go back to lights.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
Lastly, the Historic, Historical Commission, and this is the last one, guys. First of all, a quick Google search would show that we have a South Brevard Historic Society, a North Brevard Historic Society, a Cocoa Florida Historic Society, a Florida Historic Society, and a Melbourne, Florida Historic Society, all encompassed within Brevard County. Only one surrounding county has a light board that is similar to this. In 2019, I brought forward the issue on the date that is currently on our seal. It is incorrect. It is literally, the date on our seal is incorrect. Two, three years ago, I would have thought that the Historic Commission would have A, probably picked that up before me, or B, done something to fix that. They have done nothing to remedy that. So this board's responsibilities can either be absorbed by staff or other historical societies in Brevard County, and I'd like to see if I had any support for transferring those responsibilities to the one of five or six other historical societies that are located in Brevard County.
Mr. Zonka, actually, this is the one I thought might be good to do something different with, because they're having a hard time really getting anything moving forward. There isn't funding, so I thought on this, and I don't know if this could work, is instead of being an official board, if they could just maybe keep it as a community group. That way, they can meet when they want, talk freely, and then figure out some moving forward processes, because they have to come up with funding on their own as well. So I think this might be a good one not to be a government board anymore, and just allow them to move forward as a community board. They're welcome to use my office for these meetings as well. So that's just an alternative thought I had, but I'm not sure that this board's able to do much right now anyways. There's just no funds for it anyway, and that's what I've been dealing with the last six years, so. You have my attention on that one, sir.
I'm good with getting rid of that, too.
I agree. Put this on the next meeting.
I'll suffer through it.
I agree.
Okay, Madam Chair, thank you for --
There's one more.
Which one? Oh, the mayor, I'm sorry, I apologize. I apologize. The Marine Advisory Council. Again, most of the boards, most of the board members are not experts in this field. Two counties have something similar, two of the neighboring counties, three do not. Now, there's a grant that is provided that looks at whether or not there is a council that does this. That grant, again, is for $60,000. The council provides two points or 2.4% of the total amount needed in order to get said grant. I looked at some of the counties that received this, and numerous counties that received this grant did not have a similar Marine Advisory Council. Manatee, Palm Beach, St. Lucie County, in fact, a couple public institutions of higher learning received a similar grant and did not have that. So in other words, those two points are certainly not necessary to continue with that grant. There are alternative options. Again, people can speak directly with commissioners of the district, they're welcome to address the entire board at meetings, and they can bring up issues with staff to investigate further. So in 2020, the Marine Advisory Council made recommendations to the board. What have they done regarding a safety zone nearing, near Camp Holly? So they lowered the speed limit, they made the suggestion of that. That was 2020. There is a gap for 10 years where they provided no actionable items. I spoke with the director of this, and the one we got before 2020 was in 2010, when the Brevard County Comprehensive Maritime Management Master Plan, Brevard Recreational Boat Study, and the Brevard County Mooring Field Analysis. So the fact that we get recommendations from them that are small and every 10 years means probably it is not required as a core function of government. So I would suggest we do away with the Marine Advisory Council.
So does he have two other commissioners in favor? I like this board, so it's up to you guys. I've got two more.
Yeah, I'm okay with it going on the agenda.
Okay, Commissioner Zonka's on the agenda?
I am, too.
On the agenda?
Yes.
Okay, shot down. You get to put it on the agenda.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
There are some passionate people on that board.
Passionate, not hardworking.
I'm saying, what are they doing?
See, they're pretty smart, they put in a lot of good input. You're going to be surprised. I hope they show up and talk to you.
Oh, I'm sure they're smart, but.
Yeah, they always show up, too. So we'll see, but, okay.
They have to make their case.
They will, they have to make their case. Okay, we are done with that, sir?
Yes, thank you for the indulgence.
All right. All right, we are moving into item J3. Mr. Tad, I do have two cards on this, but if you introduce it, it would be wonderful. Three cards.
Yes, Madam Chair. Item J3 is a final plat approval and contract approval for Fox Glen subdivision. In this request, we're asking the board to approve the plat for 100 units on 28 acres and authorize the chair to execute the contract agreement. This item was on the agenda, and the advanced agenda is F2. When we reviewed it prior to it being finalized, we found a few scribners errors in the agenda report and in some of the supporting documentation, so we removed it. We got with the applicant, they were able to make the appropriate corrections. However, it was beyond the time that we would be able to present it as a consent item, so we requested to have it added on to the agenda. We appreciate your indulgence.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. We're working with you on a few of those things, they're just tiny little minor things, and that happens from time to time, but this is some things we've been working on for a time period, and I appreciate your work, sir. And I thank you for making sure all the i's are dotted and t's are crossed. I appreciate it very much. We have three cards on this. I have Mr. Richard Hefelfinger.
Rick Hefelfinger, District One. Question I had, and I actually talked to Keith in your office, zoning and planning, this seemed to come out of the weeds somewhere, and I never saw anything about a development down there, and I'm concerned because it's District One. We've got a planned development that's kind of slow-stalling with Cocoa down the end of my street that's going to add a whole lot of houses. 524's got multiple apartment complexes, I don't know how many units they got, and if this is a really old one that went through zoning and planning, and those other projects have happened, I don't know where the sewage is going for this development. I don't know where the sewage plant processing capability is right now. I know that Cocoa's going to install the pumping station for this 100 houses. Where does the, questions are, we're thinking about the fact that we're growing pretty fast, and I hope we're not going to exceed our septic system, because I don't know if these guys are kicking any money at it. I mean, I don't care, I have a septic system in my backyard. I know exactly where my stuff goes. But if this is going to exceed those facilities, we had some problems, I guess Titusville had an overflow. I don't know if that was age. I hope these facilities, that somebody's looked at that, and zoning and planning was supposed to. I couldn't find any record in the recent reviews about this Fox property, so.
Mr. Hefelfinger, I'll tell you what, tomorrow, I'll get you some information on that to help you feel comfortable with those questions.
Well, if it went through zoning and planning, and, you know, everybody looked at this growth, because growth's very important.
I'll get you some good data on it to give you some comfort.
Yeah, and if you had the information about the, do you offhand know where it goes? Is it the sewage processing facility and?
I don't want to answer incorrectly, but since you said Cocoa's putting it in, I'm guessing it's going to Cocoa, but let me get that information for you.
Okay, they're just doing the pumping station. I don't know where they pump to.
Just so Titusville helps, that was an equipment problem. They've got capacity, and they're working on replacing all that. It's such an old city, if that helps.
Well, I hope these guys paid, any impact fee for these guys to help with those facilities?
I'm sure, but let me get your exact data before.
Just concerned, before you approve that, that we went through the proper steps to make sure we --
We would have done that, so let me get you the data for sure.
Okay, I hope they're smart growth. Thank you, that's all.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may, just for the board's information, so the plans, the engineered plans were reviewed, and part of that process is to ensure that they have the adequate sewer connection, and then as we permit each individual home, there's also another review that takes place there to ensure that there's adequate capacity in that system for that house. to ensure that there's adequate capacity in that system for that house. So there should be, I would say with good confidence, it has been resolved or it has been, you know, it has been reviewed and there's adequate capacity, otherwise, we wouldn't be bringing it forward.
Okay, Mr. Heffelfinger, I will get that sent to you, sir.
Because it says that a lot of this stuff is the responsibility of the homeowners association, and if you're approving single houses, how can they build that whole thing out? What happens if they're halfway through and they exceed? It sounds like you're approving them as they build the house.
No, it's, there's already been a mass, I'll get it sent to you.
So there was a big impact study for the whole development, okay.
Yeah, this take, this is so many hours behind the scenes of all this, but I will get it sent to you so you have comfort.
All right.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, Ked Ludwa, I'm gonna hold you to the end, Ms. Sandra Sullivan? Because you, sir, are the, for questions only, Mr. Cannon? Yeah, so, okay. So I'm gonna let Ms. Sandra speak, and then we'll see where we are.
So, Sandra Sullivan, Salt Patrick Shores. I looked at the last planning and zoning meeting, and then I did a search. I went to 2022 in Legislature. I did a search for Fox Glen and, as well as the developer. I could not find it in all of last year for the Planning and Zoning Advisory Board. The concern, I, I have a couple of things. Typically, on something like this, the documents are, for transparency and accountability, are loaded up in Legislature, so those documents are there. Usually, there is a document from planning and zoning. So it just raises a question, I think, for, on that issue, and as well, usually, the concurrency documents are uploaded as well. The related documents to a development approval when it comes to this board. The other thing is, as I understand reading this, this is a sale of county property, and so I would have expected also for accountability to see an appraisal to make sure that it's been, is that correct? It's a sale of county property, is that what you're saying?
I'm sorry, ma'am, you're doing public comment right now, so...
So my rec, my request is, I would request to table this item until the next commission meeting so that the appropriate documents that should be, you know, as far as the transparency and accountability are uploaded to Legislature. I did reach out today to see if I could get the documents, and a PRR was created, and I communicated, I didn't really want a PRR, I just would like to see the documents online so that they're there for the public as appropriate. Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner, I'm comfortable with this. This was under consent, we found a couple of errors we had to fix. So this is a fairly comfortable, easy process today, so...
Madam Chair, if I may...
Please.
So the documents that were attached are the documents that we have consistently attached to every plat document. So at this point, this is the final process in our subdivision process. There's two other steps which are completely administrative, and that's when we meet with the applicant to discuss the design of the subdivision and the layout, and then when we review the engineered plans that are accompanied or that show the design of the infrastructure and the lot layout. Those are administrative functions by code. And the process that we're here today is the acceptance and approval of the plat. There is no advisory board involved in this process, so there would be no advisory board for us to take it to, and there would be no documents of those, you know, for those other steps to be included unless you wanted us to start including all of that information. But there could be hundreds of pages of engineered plans and stuff like that. I don't think it would be an efficient use, and plus, it's not what you're really taking into consideration.
No, sir, and if we had a state in consent, we hadn't found those items, everything's within order, so...
Yeah, Commissioners, if you will, if there's a zoning change that's required or a comp plan modification or future land use plan modification, then we go through a very extensive public process. But as soon as that zoning is completed, then it shifts into an administrative process, just as Tad described.
Thank you, sir. So can I have a motion to approve this?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Zanka, second by Commissioner Tabia. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, pass, it's 5-0. We are finished with all of our items, so we're gonna move into another public comment card. Mr. Rick, sir, come on up.
Rick Heffelfinger, District One. Meeting ago or before, I made a question about KBB, and we got some resolution. And Mary Ellen, last name is Donner, right? She was just up here. She said that she's got a contract, so they're moving forward, KBB, because there was some question about how that whole process worked. So hopefully, that KBB's gonna love that contract language, they're gonna sign up, and maybe we can get signs. Because you had a young lady up here, and she was probably working through KBB, doing cleanups and getting her points for her civic duty. So I, I'm happy that that happened rapidly. I don't know how long it's been grinding, but it looks like we may get some resolution, and I still have to talk to the KBB guy because he wants to go in front of his board. And I hope it doesn't turn out that the Carxen Rec did something like raise the rates or the cost to KBB to try to participate. I hope that doesn't happen, but at least we know that the process is moving. So I wanted to kind of thank Mary Ellen for that and hope that there's no snags in that contract.
Thank you, sir.
Interesting thing about the, my observation just off, because I got a couple of seconds here.
You do.
These, these boards that are the citizens, and Commissioner Goodson, I like the idea. It's involvement for the community. That has a lot of value. And if the cost is a county cost for staff, why, why do these boards need so much staff? Can't they meet at a, I mean, they're just getting together to try to help, right? They shouldn't cost anything unless they've got materials.
Sunshine laws.
So you have to have staff there to capture minutes? They can't capture minutes and do it themselves? So you always have at least one staff taking minutes?
Well, they wouldn't need the government to run that board if we didn't have county staff involved. There would just be a community board in their neighborhood.
Which we're talking about doing with a couple of them right now.
Okay, but an advisory board is, I mean, they're just...
It's a legal board.
But the members are appointed by the commission. So if the, if the commission's appointing the members, then that's the government involvement. So we have a responsibility to that board to make sure...
And I did, I'd also like to give kudos to whoever fixed the webpage for the county that now has all those advisory boards, it has who's on them. I don't know what, I don't know if Commissioner Tabia, you had something to do? But that's getting organized now. So if somebody's got a question about minutes, those minutes should all be there now, right? So that's a wonderful way for the community to see those boards and see what happens. And I think, for the money you're talking about, jeez, you know, we spent more money talking about that than it would cost to run several other more boards, just to shut them down. So it, to me, it's an opportunity for the community to get involved, and I guess, it's actually a vote of how well a job you guys are doing because those guys have nothing to recommend to you to improve the system. So you must be doing well, because they're looking at what you're doing, right? So I think it's a, it's a good check. Just, just my two cents. Thanks, that's all I have.
Thank you, sir, thank you. All right, we are moving into board reports. County Manager.
Thank you. I do have one item, and I just wanted to advise the board relative to one of the CRAs, the one with Satellite Beach. During late December, we heard from the city that they were looking into paying off their CRA loan early and terminating that CRA. That CRA, as you may recall, we entered into inter-local agreement with them several years ago under Board Direction around 2017, 2018. They are scheduled to terminate in 2026. And so, there's a couple of reasons for them doing what they're doing, but I just wanted to let the board know that they are planning to have a, have a meeting, I believe, in February. It's gonna be considered by the Satellite Beach City Council and then followed up with the, with their CRA board, and they plan to terminate the agreement and the CRA itself. And so, it's really not anything that I need the board to do, just wanted to give you a heads up on that.
Ms. County Manager, let me ask you a quick question because I met with, what's her name, Ms. Courtney, but who's that girl that came with her? Who's the one that came with her? Mindy, Mindy Gibson. And at the end, Courtney had mentioned that they were getting ready to pay off the CRA because it was a benefit, she said it would start benefiting us, and that also, they had used this from some high-end beach construction, so it was a good thing for them. So if they pay this off, because I remember talking to you after that, trying to figure this out. So instead of us getting the funds this year, they're gonna use the funds which we would have got to pay off their CRA debt. So actually, in the long run, it's gonna help us. But in the beginning, we're, we're gonna take a big, big hit on this right now, correct? First year?
Right, because this past year, when we prepared the budget, you may recall that Satellite Beach was limited to, they limited in the CRA to using those funds, the city and the county funds from the CRA only for their debt service. And so, we were receiving back at the end of each year, and we had projected to receive a certain amount, I believe it was over $700,000 for this fiscal year that we're in. If they use those funds to pay off the debt, the benefit for the county is, just as it is for the city, that any interest in the future isn't gonna accrue, you're not paying that, but they're paying it off this year. So it will be us receiving less funds this year, but then, upon the termination of CRA, we won't be making that contribution, which is over $900,000 a year. Starting the next year, you will get the full tax increment that they were previously getting in the CRA. So it does benefit the city because they had, they had some payments coming up for LIBOR and a variable debt interest rate that they had in place. So it will benefit them from that perspective, but it will benefit us in the long run because the CRA will be shut down four years earlier than, three years earlier than it otherwise would have been.
Right, but it's really good that they're able to do this. It's good that the county had these funds that they won't be paying us to pay off their debt, too. So for them, it's a real good thing, and down the road, it'll be good for us, a good benefit. But I just want to just recognize the fact that this would have been county's funds that are paying off the debt, and I approve it, but I think it's a good idea, but it's the county jumping in and doing our part as well, so... County Attorney, sir.
No report, Madam Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Goodson.
No report, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Tabia.
No report, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Felton.
No report.
Commissioner Zanka.
No report.
Yeah, I have a little bit of a one because I think this is gonna come up later. I had a meeting with Ms. Barker and Ms. Mindy Gibson, and they wanted to discuss the Satellite Beach parking that we've been talking about for a while. So I was trying to come up with some alternative ideas that might have been creative. I just want to tell you, all this was a very combative meeting, I was actually a little bit surprised. So I, I tried to keep moving in a direction to try to figure out what we can do as a board, and I had talked to them about, maybe there's a way that, you know, they can, we'll, we'll take it back, and then they can purchase it. And then I had a concern that if we did that, we would lose the ability to get beach dirt, which we get through our TDC and through Natural Resources. We spend a lot of money on Satellite Beaches through all these situations. I'll get some better data for you later down the road, and it's, it's good, it benefits the city, it's all well. But I need to get some data for you guys, I'm gonna give it to you guys. But I felt like we were getting, I'm just gonna tell you, it felt like a little bit of bullying, so I'm not sure what to do with this and how to look at it. So I'm gonna try to pull some numbers together for us, but if you guys would start looking into it, it would be good. I actually changed my mind on that, and I'll call Ms. Barker on that because I told her, I just don't want to, to sell it to Satellite Beach because we're gonna lose all that money to be able to refurbish their beach later. But I'm, I just, more I looked at it, and I started looking at the numbers Commissioner Tabia gave us in that presentation, I'll dig them out. I still don't really understand why they don't just charge the same for everybody. It's, it's not that much for their citizens as well, but I do have a lot of heartburn that the unincorporated areas gave that property back when they did, and somebody wrote that into that contract on purpose. And so, I, I, I think they just need to abide by the contract they agreed to, and if they don't, maybe we need to take it back. And I wanted to ask Ms. Donner if we did take it back, if you would, Ms. Donner, come up, if it would be a, a financial burden on us to, to retake those properties, and then we could maintain them.
We could charge for parking.
We could, we could charge for parking and use it for upgrades as well. But I want to get this data from Ms. Donner right now to help us make a decision what's best for our county. Commissioner Tabia, thank you for bringing this up and leading us, sir, back when you did. Ms. Donner? Could you tell me, if, if we were to take it back, would it be a real burden for Brevard County's parks to take back these parking properties?
Brevard County Parks Recreation Natural Resources did at one point run that park, and we did do some fiscal impacts a couple of years ago, and it would not severely impact our south area budget.
Okay. So I, I don't mind if Satellite wants to keep it, they have a different vision for it in their area. And anytime that you have, like, I would have done a long-term lease, I wouldn't have done the contract they did now, would have done that. And if a city wants to make an improvement to it, they can, but it still belongs, the county belongs to everybody. So where I'm at, I don't know where you guys are gonna land, but I'll dig more data up if you want. I, I think they just need to do the same for everybody, and then this just all goes away, and then they can do what improvements they want, or, you know, or we just maintain it, charge it, and then we help to upgrade it a little bit. But I just wanted to bring that up to you guys to start thinking about it because I will call Ms. Barker, because I told her honorably I would call her and tell her, because I was trying to think of a purchase price, but the more I thought about it and I had conversations with the attorney, I just couldn't get comfortable with it. So if you guys would think through that, that would be great. But I wanted to tell you, something I'll have to call and tell you. So that's my board report. All right, Commissioner Tabia, wake up.
Just to be clear, Madam Chair, if we go down that road, road, I certainly hope we would treat that like any other park that we have. Satellite Beach has invested a lot of funds in that, and, and that's great. But I think if they would want us to take it over, they would expect that same level of service, and I certainly don't want to create the have parks and the have-not parks.
We could charge.
So to be, well, I'm, I'm...
I know, you're off, that's your whole thing different on that.
We do charge.
I know.
We do charge, we, we charge property taxes, and property taxes goes to pay. It's the port, the one that likes to take property and then charge the park. I'm firmly against that, but I would just want to make sure if we, and, and, listen, I'm not for purchasing, allowing the, I think that, you know, that there's deed restrictions on there, and I think attorneys have been very clear that they need to abide by, and their pie-in-the-sky idea, while creative, lacks any grounding in, in fact. And so, I'm sorry you were treated that way, and the way you were probably treated was because I've unequivocally said no, and will continue to say no. So I don't know where anyone else is on that board, but the fact that they haven't called my office means, you know, I think that much more pressure on, on you guys. And when we start to offer more alternatives, I think we just fuel the fire. So I think, you know, we probably wanna, if they want to walk away from it, they have the ability to, to walk away from that, they won't. They won't, because they have a multimillion-dollar development that's going across the street. That is the worst bluff ever by the city of Satellite Beach to do that. So call them on that. But, and, and I appreciate the work that Courtney Barker and Mindy Gibson have done on that. They're fighting extremely hard for the taxpayers of Brevard County, but it just comes at our expense, and, and I'm not willing to go down that path. And if we stand firm as a board, as we have in the past, they'll stop approaching us. And I can't imagine, you're going through this, I can't imagine what Commissioner Felton is having to deal with as he represents that area. So to make it easier, to make it easier, I'm gonna be no. I'm gonna be across, and I've consistently been on that, absolutely utterly no on their scheme. And it's not just me saying that, that's staff that has said that plan just does not work. So again, I'm sorry you had to deal with that, and it's probably my fault for saying no many, many, many times to those folks, but I've said it four or five, and they've stopped approaching me. So maybe there's a technique to, you know, go in a different direction.
Okay, I'm with you on the no right now, and I will call Ms. Courtney because I told her I would and have this conversation with her. But it gave me a little bit deeper time to think about the process. But if you guys wanted to take it back, I know Commissioner Tabia's not on with that, but I would do that as well, so... And I think we're done, and I will call this meeting adjourned. You guys have a great evening.
Thank you.
The opinions expressed by any member of the public during any period of public comment do not necessarily reflect the views or opinions of the Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida. Space Coast Government Television were the program's sponsor and are solely those of the presenter. The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida... The Board of County Commissioners of Brevard County, Florida, Space Coast Government Television,